This is a regularly scheduled public session. The Woodbridge Board of Education is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by resolution adopted at the organization meeting held on January 2nd, 2024, and in a revised resolution at the public session meeting held on January 22nd, 2024. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has also been posted in the Woodbridge Borough Hall, the Woodbridge Memorial Library, TapInto.net, and the Woodbridge Board of Education website. Meetings of the Board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. The Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of this meeting reserved for comments made from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Please be advised that all or portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Here.
Mr. Carvin?
Here.
Mrs. Milano?
Here.
Mr. Ficaro?
Mr. Biamonte?
Here.
Mr. Nieves?
Present. Okay, on to our Board Administrator's report and the public hearing on 2425 school year budget. So Board members, I'll ask that we actually take it down.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 2024-2025 budget presentation for the Woodbridge Jersey School District. If I can have the next slide, please. Our 2024-25 budget assumptions start with our state aid for '24 and '25. We've received an increase of $200,946 from our previous budget, which brings our total up to $1,704,67,000. Our extraordinary aid for 2025 increased by $38,228 and is now at $673,186. Capital Projects, as everyone knows, is our New Highland Avenue Learning Annex and Recreation Center at Doyle, which will begin construction upon the completion of school this year. Our shared services, we continue to collaborate with the Borough for construction, additional educational space to accommodate our increasing student enrollment. The next slide is a contrast of our '23-24 budget and our proposed '24-25 budget. You'll see the local tax levy increase, our total state revenue has increased, our fund balance has decreased, miscellaneous income has also decreased, Medicaid reimbursements are increasing, transfer from capital reserve, there is a zero transfer for this year, our tuition has also decreased, debt service, just a slight decrease for interest, our federal and state grants have increased, bringing our total revenue to $27,766,076. Now, I would like to state on this slide that it's very, the district is very fortunate to have increases in amounts such as the state aid, the extraordinary aid. Those increases have helped us to offset several decreases that we've, that we will be having in the next school year. Those decreases being tuition due to a drop of enrollment from our Munaki students, and also the revenue decrease due to the termination of our shared CST agreement with Munaki. So those two items together account for a tremendous amount of money, and our state increases have been able to offset that. So although our budget has just increased slightly from last year, we were able to do that and maintain it with that loss of revenue coming in. The next slide will show you our revenue sources, and of course, our local tax levy is just about three-quarters of our income. One thing to understand also about school budgets that make it a little different from our personal budgets or business budgets is that much of our state revenues and expenditures are state-mandated. So we become in a position between a rock and a hard place. There is only so much money that can come in in revenues, and yet the state mandates us to spend it on certain items that we must. On the slide here, you'll notice our second largest increase is our total state, our fund balance, miscellaneous tuition, debt service, then our federal and state. So once again, our local tax levy now is making up just about three-quarters of our revenue stream. Our next slide shows our anticipated expenses. Our direct student services have increased by 3.66%. So even with the decreases of our tuition money coming in and our CST agreement with Munaki, we were able to improve and increase our student services. Our administrative costs have come down slightly, our plant costs have come down, employee benefits are almost a 10% increase, and 99% of that is our health plan through the state. And once again, there is nothing that we can do about an increase like that except to absorb it in our budget. State and federal projects have increased almost 40%. That's money coming in for our projects from the state. Our debt service is just minimal, our capital expenditures, the decrease there, which is almost 94%, is because we are not taking a capital reserve withdrawal this year for any projects. So we're taking a zero withdrawal out of the account, the money will remain there till the next budget. Overall, we just had a 2% increase in our budget. The next slide will show the expenditures again, and the offset to our almost 75% of revenue coming in from our local taxpayers is that almost 63% of our expenditures are for direct student services. So very simply, most of the money coming in from our local tax levy is being spent on our students. Next to that, our second largest item would be our employee benefits, excuse me, in the green, and again, that is our health plan. Plant costs, administrative costs come in next, our debt service is minimal, and our state and federal tax levies. Our next slide, under fiscal management, we've been utilizing available funds to meet our district and school goals. And again, I refer back to our tax levy coming in and the money being spent, majority of it, on our students. Implementation of food services procedures to maximize the district's reimbursement from federal and state sources. This is a very important item because through our food services and our applications, the state aid formula is determined as to how much state aid we receive and extraordinary aid. Maximize shared services for purchases through our cooperative partnerships. Our next slide shows our efficiencies and continued shared services. In crafting this budget, I did an analysis of our historic and current actual expenses and revenue projections. Staffing additions to enhance our opportunities for students in identified areas. Mr. Alpro will comment on the additional staffing a little bit later in this presentation. Our continued shared services with the Borough for equipment, fuel, and maintenance, and additional shared services for the Borough renovations and our additions at the Doyle School. We continue with shared services and efficiencies with the implementation of a new payroll and benefits procedure for our staff members. Continuing to utilize cooperative contracts for the maintenance of our buildings and grounds. All programs and staffing are in place for our '24-25 school year, and there's been no increase to the debt service tax levy. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Alpro to come up to discuss our district's success stories.
Thank you, Mr. Morelli, and thank you for a great budget presentation thus far. When we talk about our success stories, we're talking about things that we have in the budget for next year that we believe make us successful, we're advancing. First off, as Mr. Morelli mentioned, we have a shortfall, if you will, of tuition money from Munaki as revenue because we have fewer students coming from Munaki. We also have numerically less revenue coming as a result of our shared service agreement expiring with Munaki. And despite that, with some good bookkeeping and vision by Mr. Morelli and myself, we're able to add a needed third-grade teacher for next year, another section, another section of fourth grade, trying to keep our class sizes below 25. That's going to be in this year's budget. Many of us know we have an expansion set for Doyle School, and at some point, the Board will be putting out a question for the public, asking for support in staffing and outfitting that new addition. These two positions would have been in that question. Now we've got them in our budget this year, and those are two fewer positions I'd have to ask for in that question ultimately. We're maintaining all of our current student activities, we're increasing school safety measures, we're realigning our high school course sequence, and we have budgeted accounts for textbooks for those realignments. And of course, we're beginning our Doyle School renovation and expansion. Is your part, Mr. Morelli, or mine?
We do it together.
Okay. The school tax levy for the '24-25 school year will increase $97.50, which is $8.12 per month, on the average assessed home value of $375,000. So obviously, if your home was assessed at a greater number, the rate is going to increase. But that is the increase for what the Borough describes for us as the average home value of $375,000. And again, I point to some loss in revenue, but at the same time, adding staff for $97.50 per each household this year. Now, Mr. Nieves, I believe we have to reconvene and answer any questions from the public concerning the budget.
All right. I'm going to open up to the hearing of citizens on this budget presentation only. Hearing none, seeing none, no questions? All right, close the hearing of citizens. Carl, thank you for that. We will now go on to our superintendent report.
Good evening again. As I will have a projection report shortly, I figured I'd do my report from down here. In reading our agenda this evening, everything is important, but I feel it's important to recognize the fact that the Board and the district is recognizing not only Teacher Appreciations Week, but as School Nurses Week, and Special Education Week all in this month. And I know that in each school building today, we started with celebration. Today, I believe the Borough bought lunch for the staff members throughout the district, and every building principal has some sort of theme going on the rest of the week. Quite honestly, we cannot operate without any of those individuals, all of our educators, educative support staff members, our school nurses. And if this is one chance to recognize all of them for their effort, it should be more than one week, but we try to cram everything into that one week. One of the things on our agenda tonight that was tabled at our last meeting was the revision of the end-of-year school calendar for this year. And the reason for the revision is to try to give the Doyle School project some more time to get started with their preliminary work. So with the Board's approval this evening, the following changes will take place, and they'll be communicated to all of our stakeholders tomorrow by each school and also posted on our website. Concerning the intermediate school, there are two unused emergency days. They are being placed into the calendar on June 20th and June 21st. June 19th was already scheduled to be a school closure. So essentially, the intermediate school's last day of school will be Tuesday, June 18th. They'll begin their one-session days on June 12th, and they'll have one-session days June 12, 13, 14, and then June 17th and 18th of the next week, last day of school, the 18th. For the Doyle School, it is somewhat similar, however, there is one major difference. They are also closing on June 18th. That will be their last day of school. Their emergency snow days are restored on the 20th and 21st. They're off on June 19th like everybody else. The difference for the Doyle School is their one-session days will start on Monday, June 10th. That is to permit the teachers to make the preparations that they need to, to assist in the preliminary construction work taking place in the school building at the end of the year. At the high school, at the high school, the end-of-year calendar will pretty much remain the same. Our school closes on June 21st with our high school graduation. That week will be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, one-session days. Wednesday, the district is closed on June 19th. The high school has two unused emergency days. Those emergency days will be converted into school closure on the Friday before Memorial Day, which will be a half-day for everybody else in the district, and then Friday, June 14th, which is another half-day for the other two schools in the district. After consideration with my administration, the Board, the Teachers Association, we felt like this was the best plan, and now it's my job to make sure that we follow through with it. And every school, if any school has any sort of revision to their end-of-year customary activities, they will share that all with their parents and family members tomorrow in communications. Now, tonight, also on our agenda, is the Board's going to take action on my recommendation to terminate or dissolve the shared services agreement with Munaki for child study team services, and I do have a presentation for that. From a historical perspective, it was last in 2011-2012 school year when Woodbridge had full ownership, if you will, on the operations of child study team within the district. And at that time, the district was smaller, and we had many shared positions. For example, our director was part-time director as well as Ostrowski School principal. We had a full-time administrative assistant. We had one full-time school psychologist. We had a full-time school social worker, and we had one part-time learning disabilities teacher consultant who also taught at the high school in the morning. In 2012-2013 school year, the district decided to outsource child study team service to the Bergen County Special Services. Bergen County Special Services, besides running their own schools, also serve as the leadership for other schools in the county. And that relationship existed from July 12, July 2012 to June 2017. And at that time, we had a director that was shared with other districts involved in Bergen County Special Services. We had a full-time school psychologist. We had a part-time social worker. We had a full-time social worker, and we had a full-time learning disabilities teacher consultant, all employees of the Bergen County Special Services. In May of 2017, the Woodbridge Board of Education terminated its agreement with Bergen County Special Services and restored its own in-district child study team to be shared with the Munaki School District. At that time, at that time in June of 2017, there are reported 25 Munaki special ed cases and 268 Woodbridge cases. And the staffing at that time started with a part-time director who was shared between both districts, so part-time in each district equals full-time. Two full-time school psychologists, one of which was shared with the other district in Munaki. Two full-time social workers, one full-time learning disabilities teacher consultant. And in the span of those five years, as numbers grew, in addition of a full-time learning disabilities teacher consultant as well as a behavioral analyst. In making a determination to make a recommendation to the Board to dissolve our partnership, one of the things I took into account is the numbers. Obviously, Woodbridge is going to have a greater number of child children special education and services. So in May 2017, as I mentioned earlier, Munaki had 25 cases. So amongst our shared staff, they were accountable or supervised for 25 Munaki cases, 293 total cases, 9% from Munaki, 91% from Woodbridge. As of today, in May 2024, the Munaki total has doubled to 51. The Woodbridge cases have actually decreased to 231, giving us 282 cases. However, the difference in sharing, Munaki now has 18% of our caseload, whereas we have 82% of our caseload. Our current case managers, three of which are shared with Munaki, obviously it's anonymous, but that's the breakdown between those who are shared with Munaki and Woodbridge and their totals. They have shared days, three of our staff members and our director spend at least two days and sometimes three days in Munaki each week. In comparing what was now the existing caseload for our case managers and what will be projected, should the Board approve tonight, my recommendation, currently we have six case managers, three of which who serve Munaki and Woodbridge, and they average 49 cases each. Some have more, but the true average is 49. With my recommendation and with the way the staffing's going to shake out, next year we'll have four case managers with 58 cases each. So obviously, that's an increase of nine cases. But in justifying my move, all of the cases are in Woodbridge, and I feel that Munaki will be better served by their team because they can remain there and not be shared, and Woodbridge will be better served by our team because we can remain here. In terms of cost, had we continued with our current arrangement, we would have shared, we would have had 5.7 of eight employees for a total of $637,000. Now, with five employees next year, we will, this is salary and benefits, $604,224, $33,640 differential, a minor cost savings, but the greatest impact, given what you heard in the budget presentation, with the decrease in revenue result from the CST, from Munaki tuition, that's one other cost savings to help offset that. In trying to analyze strengths and weaknesses after the move, if we were to take back our child study team for our own, we'd have our staff in district all week long. Outside of having to attend a meeting for an out-of-district student, they will always be within the confines of our district. Too often right now, I hear a parent or a staff member or administrator say, "I have to wait till so-and-so is back in Woodbridge tomorrow before this could be addressed." Because when the, when our staff members are in Munaki, they are servicing Munaki. And when they're in Woodbridge, they're servicing Woodbridge, but as we know, every day, things change. And what happens now is other case managers, other service providers will provide immediate assistance, knowing that that particular case manager might be coming back from Munaki the next day. And of course, there's an articulation that takes place, et cetera, and it takes time sometimes. Having everybody in district, I believe, is an advantage for us. We should be able to improve our communication between child study team, parents, staff, administrators, one calendar, one-time schedule, which makes scheduling of meetings easier. Right now, a shared case manager in offering a Woodbridge parent a meeting has to work around her Munaki schedule. All of our team meetings can take place in district because on any given day, there are staff members in Munaki and in Woodbridge. So we've conducted some meetings virtually, and we've actually asked some, one faction or the other, to meet in one central place early in the morning. Supervision, the supervision takes place within the confines of our school district. Right now, our director supervises staff in Munaki and staff in Woodbridge. Now the supervisor will be able to take care of entirely Woodbridge. Negatives, as I mentioned earlier, increased average caseload for case managers. That's something that I will have to monitor moving forward, and perhaps that's going to be a consideration in future budget planning to increase that staff depending upon the One of the advantages of sharing with Munaki is we have staff members who work with Robert L. Craig students from the time they're classified. And if those students choose to come to Woodbridge High School, the articulation is far easier because we have staff members who can bring the information following the student. That's something we will lose. A weakness is reduction in force. We are reducing two positions. One of our current staff members will go to Munaki as one of their staff members. Finally, we're going to outsource for behavioral services this year. In the past, with COVID money, we put into the budget a behavioral analyst. Prior to that, we outsourced with South Bergen Jointure. My recommendation is to outsource again this coming year, and again, take, take a look at the landscape, take a look at the case reports, and determine whether a behaviorist needs to come back into district. But I believe that having all of our child study team members in district will give us the access to students and the help that the students need in the absence of a behaviorist when things get bad. But of course, depending upon the student's IEP, we're going to have to contract with South Bergen Jointure most likely to conduct the analysis, do the evaluation, and make recommendations for, remediation recommendations for those students with behaviors. That concludes that report. I'm going to head back up, and I would, I would say that when it comes time to questions on the agenda, if you want to have any questions about anything I discussed this evening, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
So Tony, I'm going to jump ahead, and I actually just have one question. So I wrote down some notes as you went through. I get it, accessible, focused, immediate response, better communications, right, more oversight. But in that resource that's actually going to move down to Reno, Munaki, are we talking transition plan? Because I'm assuming that those cases then will be left.
That's a great question. With the people that are being lost due to the reduction, anybody who has a caseload in Munaki, definitively before they leave, are going to articulate with whomever Munaki has as their staff. Munaki is hiring a supervisor and then members of their child study team. We're not going to leave Munaki in a lurch. All of our information concerning our current coverage of Munaki students will be shared. And then we're going to have two directors. We will have a director. Munaki will have a director. And we're going to have to foster that articulation that right now could be lost unless we make that effort to continue it.
Okay. And all of our, on our Woodbridge side, there'll be those notifications that'll go out?
Yes. At any changes in specific cases being managed, assignments, will all be communicated.
All right. Trustees, do you have any questions? All right. We have approval of the minutes upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education approved minutes of the following meeting, public session 42224. You get first? Mr. Fallon? Milano? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Milano?
Yes.
Mr. Beaumonty?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
abstain. All right, trustees, we have quite a lot tonight, so I'm going to take us through the committee reports. We have curriculum and instruction approval of field trip requests, approval of purchase of supplemental literacy mathematics materials from Scholastic Inc., approval of out-of-district placements, approval of rescindment of professional development requests, approval of the purchase of professional development materials, approval of field trip requests onto personnel, approval of use of sick bank days, approval of coaching appointment, acceptance of resignation, one which is Munaki, one which is Woodbridge only, approval of a reduction in force, approval of the intermediate school sixth-period teaching stipend 2324, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 Doyle School non-tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 Doyle School tenured, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 Doyle School tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 intermediate non-tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 intermediate tenured staff, approval of the reappointment of personnel 2425 junior, senior high school non-tenured staff, approval of the reappointment of personnel 2425 to junior, senior high school tenured, tenured school, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 junior, senior high school tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 district-wide non-tenured child study team, approval of the reappointment of personnel 2020, 2425 tenured child study team, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 district-wide ESL teacher, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 non-tenured full-time power professionals, approval of the reappointment of personnel 2425 non-tenured part-time power professionals, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 non-tenured buildings and grounds personnel, approval of reappointment of personnel 2425 part-time nurse, approval of reappointment of bus driver 2424 George, approval of the reappointment of personnel 2425 non-tenured part-time, part-time lunch aids, approval of reappointment of administrative personnel 2425, approval of the reappointment of the unaffiliated district personnel 2425. This includes one for Munaki, approval of the personnel appointment, approval to co-curricular appointment, onto policy, none at this time, buildings and grounds, you have the approval of facilities request. Onto finance, we have approval of the budget funds and transfers for the 2425 school year, approval of the maximum travel reimbursement for the 2425 school year, approval of the NJ Semi Corrective Action Plan for the 2425 school year. Onto board operations, we have approval of the revision of 2324 Woodbridge School District Calendar, approval of the termination of shared services agreement with the Munaki Board of Education for Child Study Team Shared Services, resolution honoring all instructional staff members and proclaiming May 6, 2024 through May 10, 2024 as Teacher Appreciation Week, resolution declaring May 6, 2024 through May 12th as National Nurses Week, resolution declaring the week of May 12, 2024 through May 18, 2024 as Special Education Week in the state of New Jersey, and lastly, approval of the Elevator Limited Service Maintenance Agreement. Trustees, any comments, questions, or concerns before I open up to the hearing of citizens? I will open up the hearing of citizens on the resolutions only. One second, please.
Good. Thank you. Bonnie Taylor, 64 Woodbridge Street. A couple of questions. First question from...
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sorry, Mr. Taylor.
That's okay. First, I had a question for finance, page 20. Mr. Garvin, we have a transfer of 56,291 to charter schools. Is that one charter school or is that multiple charter schools?
Well, I'll turn that over to the district chair. I think it's multiple, though.
Yes, that is our state, state dollar amount that's given to us for the schools.
Do we have the, an amount of how many charter schools that we're sending students to?
I could, I could get that for you tomorrow.
Okay.
An email to you.
Thanks. Then I just wanted to talk about the determination of the shared contract with Munaki. I understand that the, our population is growing for special education services and we needed to make some changes in, in-house. However, we're referring to them as case managers. And the positions that we're losing aren't just case managers. They are specialists.
Understood.
We are losing a behavioralist, which we were so excited to get. Do we know in the district how many students are on behavior plans right now?
Being that's a student matter, I, I'm not going to reveal the number. But obviously, we do have students working on that plan.
Okay, because outsourcing it could be more costly. Just something to consider. We're also losing a school psychologist. This is detrimental. School psychologist has to test every single child that goes into special education services. Mr. Albre, you said there's 231 students currently receiving special education services. That means one school psychologist will have to test every student. That's a large number, sir. Also, we're losing a school social worker. We have one social worker now. I understand that the other is going to be going to Munaki. But while I understand money is the most important thing, so are our children. And some of these cuts are really going to impact our children, especially with the school psychologist. So I just want you to consider that position and think about how we could perhaps get a part-time in because 231 for one psychologist is way too high.
Mrs. Taylor, your point is well-taken, and I have thought about that as well. Being that this is renewal meeting, obviously, moving forward, any contracted services will be at in a future board meeting. But I do definitely see once, once this is, once action is taken and I meet with the director to discuss impacts such as that, it literally came down to how many LDTCs versus how many psychologists. They both have testing portions involved. And yes, depending upon the number of students who require evaluation by a school psychologist, that might make us have to outsource for that. And again, this is next year's plan. I do not want to make this the plan two years from now.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you. And thank you for recognizing teacher appreciation. Thank you to all the Woodbridge teachers.
Anyone else? Carl, do we have any submitted on?
No questions.
All right. I am going to close the hearing of citizens on the resolutions only. So Tony, just one question. So if I understood that correctly, as we get through the summer, you'll be evaluating and working on whether or not so come September?
Those types of services, if we feel in need, would need to be outsourced with a contracted vendor.
Yeah, but, but we'll be ready to start the new school year with? Okay. All right, trustees, looking for your support, which includes Munaki, curriculum instruction 2, 3, and 6, personnel 2, 3, 5, 12, 13 through 26. Policy, none. Buildings and grounds, one, finance, one, two, and three, board operations, one, two, and three through six. Can I get a first? Mr. Garvin?
Second.
Mr. Beaumonty? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Milano?
Yes.
Mr. Beaumonty?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
Yes.
Trustees looking for you, I remember this time, Rich. Trustees looking for your support, which is Woodbridge only. Correctional instruction, 1, 4, and 5, personnel, 1, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 27. None for policy, none for buildings and grounds, none for finance, and none for board operations. Can I get a first? Mr. Fallon? Mr. Milano? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Milano?
Yes.
Mr. Beaumonty?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
Yes.
Thank you, trustees, for your support. Trustees, do we have anything for unfinished business? Communications to report on tonight? No, no? All right, so before I open up the hearing of citizens, anything you'd like to talk about? I just have a few updates. So Tony and I had our meeting today, and I just want to provide an update where we are to the Doyle Extension. So this week, we actually started planning with staff, and I think Tony covered some of that on what the end of the year is going to look like for them. Work is going to start mid-June. The plans, just in case there's questions for tonight, will be discussed in greater detail at future meetings. There will be significant, you know, I would say upgrades and changes within Doyle for September 24. And the project is remaining on target for school opening September 25. Anything you'd like to add, Sarah?
As you said, Mr. Nieves, there's a great deal of work going on in our current Doyle School this summer. And that'll be completed for the start of school in September. And then the rest of the project, primarily the expansion of the Doyle School, that'll be completed for September of '25.
Thank you. And I know we're not announcing it, but we'll keep everybody on their surprise. I think we're all very excited about what will come September 24, at least to start. All right, I will open it up to hearing of citizens, too, anything you'd like to talk about. Come on, Faith. It's been a while.
Good evening. Fait Tharmanitis 191. I'll fill, um, two questions, and I don't know who wants to field these. There was a state increase in aid. Can you tell us where that was earmarked in terms of in the budget?
It's part of our revenue stream into the budget, so it's, it's part of, if you refer back to the presentation, it's part of our overall, overall revenues. So it's not specifically put towards an item. It's put into our pool of revenues that come in and then our expenditures.
It didn't go to sports or, or the theater program?
Correct.
It goes in the big bucket?
It goes in the, it goes, it goes in the...
There was no restrictions on it.
Okay. And then a question about the decrease in Munaki population coming, student population coming in. And I'm, I'm asking you to be omniscient about this. Can you? Is there a reason why there's a decrease in, is just, is the student population down in Munaki? Are they going elsewhere? Are they homeschooling? I, I, I can't, I don't know if you know that.
You got it?
The, uh, the population from year to year in Munaki, and they're, they're growing right now. They're growing similar to us in the, in the early elementary grades. They're growing. Now that they have their state-funded preschool program, they're offering more preschool seats, so those, those bodies are in the school and they're staying in there longer. With Munaki, it fluctuates by the eighth-grade class size before finding out which students leave or stay. And we have a good number graduating this year, and we're not replacing it with the same number that's graduating, so it's going down. My understanding is that the classes behind this eighth grade are a little bit larger, but it's still subject to whether those students decide to attend Woodbridge High School.
Thank you.
Bonnie Taylor, 64 Woodbridge Street. Has the Munaki School District had this on their agenda, and have they approved the, everything already? They have?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none? All right. Any online?
Nothing.
All right. I will close the hearing of citizens. Trustees, thank you for your support. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Fallon? Milano? All in favor? All opposed? Close tonight's session. Thank you, everybody.